Okay, so.
All right.
Hey, Pat.
Okay. Started, so be polite to everybody. Uh, I don't know how to call up that place. Maybe I go to participants.
Yeah.
Oh, look at this. Here's, let me try this.
Where'd my zoom go? Oh, there you are. Wait, where was my baseball though? Damn it.
Invite. Uh.
Got a quorum.
Yeah, we got a quorum.
Yep.
All right, well, we can't deal with that, so.
Yeah. I mean, as long as it's recorded here, that gets sent to the web anyway after. So it wouldn't be a big deal. It just won't be done by town hall streams. That's the only difference.
Yeah.
And, and I came.
Being recorded, it's fine.
I joined the meeting from the link that is posted on the town's website, so that if people want.
Yeah, anybody who wants to be there.
So, but it certainly is recording because I just got the message it said it was, so.
Okay. All right, it's a. Six thirty-two by my phone. So let's call a meeting to order. Um, this is the regular planning board meeting of Wednesday, October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. And Joe and I were just bemoaning how it got to be three weeks into October already, but there we are. So, um, I don't think we have the minutes of October sixth. I didn't get them. Are they out there?
No, I don't think.
Okay, so that, that, we have no minutes to, uh, to, uh, redo, uh, review tonight, so we'll do that next time. Um, I had a chat from Mary Ann Minard, who's here by audio, and she said that she would like something to talk about under the public audience thing. Uh, so I'll invite anyone to have, uh, make a statement if they're, or a question regarding any item that's not on the agenda. So Mary Ann, do you have something?
I do. Thank you so much for taking me from my car to make a comment, and I'm hoping you'll bear with me for a moment because I want to ask some questions of you. Um, I was away for an extended period of time, and I will admit I was a bit slow in doing catch-up when I returned.
Man, I'm sorry, I have, uh, just for a protocol here, uh, give your name and your address, please.
Sure, I'm sorry. Mary Ann Minard, Beach Road in South Berwick. And, uh, so anyways, uh, in trying to delve into the referendum questions, I first contacted Mark Lawrence today. And I called him because I wanted to get insights into the Right for Food Amendment. And I've been trying to research, and it's challenging to find accurate, unbiased, and nonpartisan information. So my discussion with him was very valuable. Um, we spoke of unintended consequences and the fact that this, um, this amendment, if passed, could, could possibly invalidate local regulations because it's a constitutional amendment. My big question was selfishly, I guess, if this amendment passes, could my next-door neighbor in Agamemnon's Estates put ten pigs in their backyard?
I'm sorry, what amendment are you talking about, Mary Ann?
This is the referendum amendment, the Right to Food Amendment.
That's coming up in November? Okay.
Right, okay. So Mark's response was that those types of decisions would have to be determined by the courts. And we know about the complete, the complexity and timeline for legal challenges. Um, so I, I'm seeking, in seeking ways to try to find out how to best communicate this, um, I learned that the main municipal association has created guidance and is encouraging communities to put the word out, and there's a memorandum that I forwarded to you through the chat, um, to put out, um, a notice of that community members should be encouraged to vote no, and that comes from MMA. Um, and I also know that in times before, say, for example, the casino issue in town, um, there was a town proclamation. I'm coming to you first because I felt like particularly around zoning, um, this, this particular constitutional amendment could definitely have a huge impact on our zoning regulations. So I thought I would begin with this esteemed group, um, ask you to consider it, certainly not at this moment, but of course, um, time is short here, uh, before our election, and perhaps communicate with our town council, um, about the, the, um, the direction that the council and the planning board would want to take, be it aligned with the main municipal's suggestion or not. So I guess there's no answers to that right now, but I just wanted to request some clarity and perhaps a response from planning board and/or town council.
So Mary Ann, uh, we meet the first Wednesday of, uh, would be November, which is the third, which is after the election.
Yes.
Um, so what would you ask us to consider that we could?
Well, I would ask you, perhaps, um, you know, after this meeting, or perhaps during a recess in this meeting, that you look at the link I sent and read the recommendation from the main municipal association, and then perhaps communicate with the town council about the possibility of following their recommendation on the message to voters in the community.
Okay. All right, uh, we probably, sure, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's a big one, and I think, I think you'll be very, um, well, I, I think if it passes, that it certainly is going to have a huge impact on zoning.
Yeah, yeah, good, good. Uh, as a matter of procedure, we, we can't take that up, but we can take this input now, but we can't take it up as an agenda item tonight because it wasn't posted, but people can, can look at, uh, every, does everybody have, there's a chat that, uh, she, Mary Ann included a link to, uh, everybody, if they have the ability to pull it up and they're interested, they can do that. Has everybody got that, that they can do that? Says chat to everyone. You check, check your chat listing and see if you got that.
Yep, I got it.
Mine's empty. I, I, it was a chat sent through the meeting?
Yeah, but it was before you joined, uh, so what I'll do, I'll do, I'll say, here it is.
And if you access it, if it doesn't bring up the memo and the suggested language, it, it could be on page two, uh, you have to kind of arrow across to that link if it doesn't go directly there.
Okay, so everybody who's online now, just, I just sent the link through the chat, so it's all there, available for you to take a look at, and you can consider actions then. Okay, thank you, Mary Ann.
Well, thank you, and have a good meeting. Take care.
Yeah. Pat, did I see, did you have her hand up, Pat? Unmute yourself and then we'll hear your question. I know where you live, but tell us where you live.
Yes, I live on Brattle Street, Pat Robinson, and Chair of the Conservation Commission. I am requesting that you invite the Conservation Commission on a site walk on this next develop, the development that is on the agenda tonight. I don't know, you know, I mean, we'll see what they say tonight. I don't know if it's going anywhere, but if you do.
That's, that's a matter for tonight. We're, we're, it will get there, where it'll be premature to schedule a site walk today, but.
Okay, yeah, that, that's fine, but I, I do want you, I, I, I would appreciate you inviting Conservation Commission to attend that site walk.
Any, anyone can come to the site walk, and it would be public notice, but understand your request.
Right, right, but I, I really feel like that we should get an invitation, so, you know, because the Conservation Commission needs to have a say. I mean, we don't want another Batlock Road problem. I think that we, we should be in there early on.
Okay, I can, I can send the link, or I can send a notice to Pat directly if Pat wants to send me her email address. I'll take care of that. If at one moment we ever get there, I'll take care of that.
Yeah, that, well, we're getting premature, we're going to talk about this project in a minute, and we'll deal with some of the details.
Yeah, I understand it's premature because it looks like it's just like, uh, you know, quick, like, this is, we're thinking about this, but yeah.
There's no application been made yet, so.
Right, yeah, I, I, that's what it looked like, but I just want to.
Yeah, okay, well, noted, duly noted, Pat, good.
Yeah, and, and for any subdivision that comes in, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Do it, and that actually relates to some of the other stuff we're going to talk about tonight, so that's well noted, so, okay, good. All right, uh, good, uh, I forgot to take the role. Let's take the role. Uh. Uh, I think we got, so, um, Hershey Herschoff, raise your hand.
Here.
Jeff Van Hand, here.
Here.
Betsy Randall.
Here.
And myself, Matt Manley is not here. He may be at town hall, and I apologize that the connection's not made, but we got four out of five, so that's a quorum, so, okay, good. All right, um. Great, um, under correspondence, uh, there's one correspondence that came late today from David to the applicants for the, um, Mel Pond Estate, uh, thing, which basically said, uh, you're past the timeframe, you've been inactive, and we gave you a month, and, and you're not there. So that correspondence is part of the record, and that application is, uh, um, moot, I can't think of the right adverb.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn, okay, yeah, so, that's, so that's noted.
Okay, do we have any? I'm sorry, can I just ask, David, do you have any other information about why they withdrew or decided not to move forward?
They did not withdraw. They had been planning on submitting something, and we've been waiting for months. I don't have all the dates right in front of me. I can find them quite easily, but bottom line is, uh, it's been languishing for quite some time. Uh, we went through some of the cases that have been doing so. We looked at it, the board decided that they would give the applicant thirty days to produce something, uh, to give us an idea. They did not, so we withdrew it. They can still propose it, but they have to come back and start from scratch.
Uh, and there, there are timeframes that they've passed in the ordinance, and we.
No, 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 I, I, I hear you. Okay, I thought maybe there was more of a story about why, but.
Uh, no public story.
Okay.
Whatever's going on is their business, so, yeah, okay. Um, I would, uh, with people's concurrence, I see Eric Weinrebe is here, um, virtually. We could skip over to, uh, the, uh, I got the wrong one up here. Hang on a second.
Actually, if I could.
Sure, Eric.
Eric Sari was supposed to be presenting, and he went to town hall, and no one was around. And he called me, and I came back to the office. I am not completely up to speed on this, and he is due back here after turning around, uh, in about ten minutes.
Okay, then we'll, we'll do some other stuff then, okay, Eric?
That would be perfectly fine with me because I would embarrass myself because I do not know all the details of this, and he's, he called me in a panic. But, so can I just ask a question? It does say on the agenda that it says in person and Zoom, but when he showed up, no one was around?
Yeah, there was a, uh, twisted circuits tonight, and the person who's supposed to be there at town hall is not there. So I apologize for that.
Okay, so.
There is a Zoom meeting right now, and it is being recorded, but we don't have the live feed from the council chamber.
And, and.
If Manley's either there, I don't know.
And the invitation was for people to show up there, of course, and we apologize for that confusion, Eric, so.
Okay, that, that's okay, just as long as, we're, we're fine with that, it's just as long as we understand how we got there. Okay, I will go unmute, and he'll be along very shortly.
Okay, we'll do other things, and hopefully, we'll certainly wait for him to get there, and I apologize for his running up and down two thirty-six.
Thank you.
Okay, good, we'll come back to you then. Okay, then, um, let's go to, uh, have I got the right, yes, hang on a second. Let's go to item two, which is, uh, the, David left our last meeting and, um, prepared, uh, two things essentially. One was the cleanup, a proposed cleanup to the, uh, ZBA requirement for variances for road standards under the subdivision regulations, and we'll talk about that. He'll present what he has on that. And the second thing is, we had started, we had considered two, uh, ordinances, one in the subdivision, one twenty-one, and one in the zoning, uh, site plan for one forty, regarding clarification of the notification to the public at the sketch plan level to participate and ask questions of the applicant and the applicant to make notices. So I'll hand it over to David Galbryth, and you take it in any order you want, David.
Okay, well, why don't, uh, why don't you guys let me know which one you want to hit first, and?
Uh, let's do the notice ones first.
Okay, so how about, should we go to the, hold on, notification? How about street design? I mean, excuse me, site plan review?
Okay, sure, let's do that one first, one forty.
Okay, and you should have had, uh, you should have that, and I'm just opening it up right now. Sorry, I didn't know which one we were going to hit first.
Yeah.
I've already got like ten things open, so.
Uh, are you, are you able to share that?
I sure can, give me two secs.
Make sure you got the rights to do that. There we go. I, I could, I could pull it up as well, if you have trouble sharing it.
Yeah, let's see. Okay, and I just got to move that back. There, so we had some screen juggling. All right, let me see, it's still opening as soon as we can. It looks like I can share it, so. There we are. Okay, let's try and share this. Oh, gee, very sorry.
I have to, I have to give you rights.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go, perfect.
Can you see that? Um, make sure.
It says you're sharing, we haven't got the image yet.
Okay, so I'm sharing.
There it is, good, we're all set.
Okay. And that's, okay, so that's the first one, and subdivision review, sorry, there we are. Okay. Now, let's see, I want to make, okay, do you see the red lines?
Yes.
You see the, okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, so, um, this is, uh, the first document we're looking is, is the working draft, uh, should be dated ten twenty, twenty, twenty-one, and it's the ordinance. We're looking at the subdivision of land, uh, which is one twenty-one dash four. And what we really focused on, uh, was looking at some amendments. We went over this last meeting, and one of the things that was kind of missing was the sketch plan, the original draft, um, language, said the city, uh, the, excuse me, the town has to send notification upon receipt of a sketch plan notice. We have been asking applicants to do that, but they, um, but the, the actual ordinance language says that the town's supposed to do that. We discussed it last meeting, so I proposed a couple of things in here, um, to add. The other thing is, it was very vague on what information be shared, should you be shared by who? So it's who's responsible and what needs to be shared. So what I did is, I went through, and I added all this item in red, so there's a fair amount of red, but it's just in one area, okay? So the first thing is, um, I wrote some language saying, here's what you need to do. Um, and I can read through them if you'd like, or read along. Um, a sketch plan discussion with the planning board will be scheduled according to a submission schedule set by the town. As you know, we have these schedules. When something comes in, Amy takes a look at it, she shares it with Joe, they determine when it should be on the agenda. What we're proposing is that the applicant takes that responsibility of that notice on, but we will need to tell her the date. Pretty simple stuff. So, um, rather than, we also talked about when, who should be notified. So I carried the butter language. I just put it through as, uh, an abutting property owner. That's in this section here. Is that highlighting for you?
Yes.
One forty, okay, one forty, I basically referred back to definition section only because if we change a definition section, then we'll automatically get updated. So that's a little bit of housekeeping on that one. Item number two, um, outlines, you need to have it, uh, the notification in writing, and it needs to include an overview of the application, just basically what you're trying to do, eighteen lots, for example, using today's, um, example, uh, and single-family subdivision, this amount of acreage, blah, blah, blah. It needs to also include the sketch plan meeting date and time, which is, the town will notify them what that date will be. So meeting time, location, and the contact information for both applicant and town staff.
You said, you got city staff there.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, good catch, all right, I'm gonna, this should be my track changes, so, let's see. Yeah, but that's fine.
Yeah.
Now, put that in bold. Okay, sorry about that, there, so. We do, sir, okay, so, the catch.
Hey, David, I have one quick question, if I might.
Please.
A butters, I assume, just refers to people who are adjacent or contiguous to the property, right?
And across the street or across water bodies.
Okay, is it, is, is there ever, I, I was the impression, I remember having notified at butters myself that it, sometimes it was like within a certain number of feet, or, you know, especially if it were.
It is, it's by two hundred and fifty feet, but again, if that, if that definition ever changes.
Yeah.
It'll automatically update to this, so we suddenly decide, let's notify everyone within five, we're covered.
Okay, and that's the, that's the definition it refers back to in parentheses, okay.
Exactly, and I've, and I've got that in a separate document if we want to look at that before we wrap up.
That's, that's fine, I, I believe you.
Okay, I should have, I should have also given you fair warning. I'm trying to kill two birds with one stone on this. So the other language we're going to be looking at probably the next item, which would be, what are we looking at now, subdivision, will be, um, site plan. So the notification, we wanted to carry that over, so almost all this language is mirrored.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
So the, the last thing is, we talked about putting a deadline on when that notification needs to be received. We decided, or we, part of discussion, we said, I put in seven days here. I thought that was the general, so they have to receive that notification within seven days of the hearing. Or, excuse me, with a meeting, it has to be sent within it.
Yeah.
Yes, sent, yes, that's within a minimum, so, um, and then I did not, uh, so this is all language that we had, uh, this is language I copied from the other document.
Okay, so let me ask a question, David, so that, all that makes total sense, that big fat paragraph you just went by. That, 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 that was not part of the subdivision, uh, scratch pan thing, but now you brought in from the, uh, from the, uh, site plan review.
Uh, it, most of it is, was missing from both the site plan and this, uh, excuse me, both the sketch plan review issues, uh, and the site plan review, so subdivision and sketch plan. What I did is, I looked at the language of both, and I basically, uh, wrote this section from, I should have started with the other one, probably, but.
That's fine, that's fine.
But what I did is, I, I wanted them to read the same.
So you're talking about.
Oh, same notification, same requirements as far, whether they're doing a site plan for a new McDonald's, or they're doing a subdivision.
But, but the, that, that big fat paragraph that starts, the applicant shall be prepared to provide the board with blah, blah, blah.
Correct.
After, after that, that, that's, that's new, but it's, it's a compilation of the, the two.
Exactly. And, and, and additional language that I put in there, because we talked about they have to notify them of the meeting. But in the, for example, it didn't say you have to notify them of the time, location, and date. You know, I mean, it, it's, it's common sense stuff, but, you know, if we don't spell it out. Uh, the, the other issue that I went down, if we can go down to drop down D here, is the old language, uh, said that the planning board may require a public hearing. So what I did, I took that out, and I said the planning board shall, uh, public meeting shall be held, um, and blah, 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 as, and then I just referred back to the prior section.
Yep.
And other than that, that's, that's really it.
Um, David, uh, we talked, we, have we determined yet whether this is something we can do administratively, or would have to go to town council as the ordinance change? We don't know.
Once, one, uh, well, originally, when I first looked at the language, we were gonna, gonna just change sort of the shall to may. You know, I, excuse me, yeah, we, because it originally, the planning board may have, uh, so we thought, if we're saying, making the requirement just slightly different, we're not changing the overall, uh, triggers of what happens when. I've added enough language that I was going to ask the town attorney, but I think I've added enough language that I'd just rather take it to the, to the town council as a housekeeping item, and really say, we did that. The, uh, so that's really it. It, it, I thought it was fairly easy, but I figured you guys may want to words with some of this, so.
Uh, question, um, this is, this is the butters, that's, that's, that, that's what was there before.
Hmm.
Um, with the input from the Conservation Commission earlier this evening, uh, would we want to also have them notify other town boards?
We can have, uh, at the sketch plan level, we can require notification of anything that you want. If it, if, if it's a requirement of the ordinance, they need to do it. Um, so we can certainly require, uh, we could put in there, you know, other boards as determined by the city staff, or, um, mostly, I think the Conservation Committed, Commission, for the most part, is going to be interested in some divisions. Um, I'm guessing, but, but there may be some projects or abutting sensitive areas or whatever that the Conservation Commission may want to go, hey, jeez, you don't want to put that Walmart there, not that we have one coming, because there's thirty acres of wetland.
But also, I mean, uh, there might be, uh, uh, something that the historic, uh, board would want to be, so. We, we, we add, who, who would determine that list, or, I suppose, it could be part of a, a notification, but they always have to notify.
Right. If I, you can, you can, I, if you want to notify them, I would say you notify them in writing, just like you would an abutting property owner, and it would likely be, like I said, the Historic Commission. That's going to be very project-specific, so usually it's like that anyway. But with anything else, we could certainly say the Conservation District, the other thing that I wouldn't mind putting in there is, uh, is, for example, the school district. Um, if, if we, uh, I mean, I don't know if they need to be involved with bus stops, but that could happen after, if and when.
Yeah, that, that can happen, yeah.
It's not really part of the site plan review process, but notification, but certainly.
Well, I think, I think, butters is the butters, and then other town, other, other town boards. Um, you know, they wouldn't do the library board, they wouldn't do this, that, but we should identify which other town boards, including the Conservation Commission, should be part of the notification.
Okay. Uh. Uh, organs. Uh, I'm just trying to figure where we want to drop it in.
Yeah.
Um, can I just add it? If it's in the, if it's in the historic district, can we make sure the historic, I assume they have to get notified anyway, right?
Sooner or later. Yes, this, this brings a minute sketch.
Yeah, so I would say if it's within our historic zone or the purview of the Historic Commission, then, then.
Uh, Conservation Commission, obviously. Is there any other, there's no other standing boards that would have, take a potential interest, is there?
Uh, let's see. And, hold on. I don't know if I'm, am I still screen tearing?
Yep.
Ah, okay, let me go back to that then, that, I'm like, um, I could, I could do a once-over of the boards, but certainly we can.
And, and just make, and it's, it's got to be, you know, land use, or not land use, but boards that have jurisdiction or could have jurisdiction depending on circumstances.
We, I, we're, we're not doing a, uh, I mean, the rec board and stuff like that, but it's really so, you know.
No.
I would just say the Conservation Commission, and if I'll look through the list of, of other town boards, I'll see if anyone.
The historic district commission and Conservation Commission, and if there's others, we can think about that, but, uh, I, I, for sure, do those two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and with, okay, so let me do this real quick, and I just want to save this one. Okay. All right, I've got that one. There you go, I'm giving you back your screen real quick. Should we go to the next one, is?
Site plan, yes.
Okay, so let's see, so. So, yeah. Okay, now. There you guys are, all right. Sorry, I've got to move people on screens here, so I've got to change you from one screen to the other. I can't. There you guys are, all right, sorry, I've got to move people on screens here, so I've got to change you from one screen to the other, I can't see you, and you can't see me, I mean. Let's try this one. Are you able to see that now?
There you go.
Okay, so this is the site plan approval, again, working draft. Same kind of things I did, so this is where I originally started. Um, so I should have, I apologize, I really should have thought about it and used this. So what I did is I went by in the site plan procedures, and I was reading all of the things that we already talked about in site plan procedures. Almost everything from it is applicable to subdivision and, and, and site plan of subdivision or sort of. So this language had a little bit more detail, so what I started out with is just the items that we'd listed in red. And this is what I used for the one that we just went over. Okay? So, um, this basically says the exact same thing, except last time it was all in red, because I'd cut and paste.
Yeah.
Uh, pasted it, um, from one document to the other, but it, it's really the same things I'd need to cut and, uh, just make the same kind of modifications to that. And the only other thing in this one is. Oops, the other one, okay, and that, and that's really it. So I could add, um, same notification.
Yeah, the same thing about the, uh, conservation commission, so I just took in whatever other boards. Just stepping back from this, uh, uh, three, four steps, what we started with was a, uh, suggestion of this board that we make, uh, make it more easy or more required, that applicants for either subdivision or site plan bring in the public, and they, they're responsible for bringing the public at, um, at the sketch plan level, which is the, where, where real decisions can be made.
Right.
We discovered that the ordinances had it already, but it was a may, a may situation, the town had to do it. So all this is doing is cleaning it up, to make the, make it formalized that the applicant makes these notifications. And therefore, the, uh, public has the, uh, uh, possibility and, and the right to ask questions of the applicant at the first level that they come to the board, which is a sketch plan. So it turns out, we didn't have that much work to do, this not, it's not new material, but it's, um, uh, it, it's cleaned up to accomplish that, that goal that we set, but, set up about a month ago.
Right.
So is our next step bill to, do we have to vote on this and then pass it to the town council?
I think what we want to do is, uh, have David propose a final ordinance next time, and we can vote at that time at, at, to, on, on the ordinance and also to, to, uh, to send it on to the town council. Because we have a couple of minor changes to this, which we want to, we want to bless at the next time.
Now, the, now, um, did you want to try and do a public hearing on it at the next meeting? I don't know if we could, with Amy not being in, but if I modified the language, we could technically do a public hearing, get some more public input. But I assume we'll probably workshop this with the, all, these three items with the council at a workshop.
I, I would prefer to workshop them with the council, because it, it, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'll write, I'll, like I've done in the past, I'll write a memo saying, here's what we're looking at doing, and we're, uh, the board is recommending a, uh, the M A R B workshop.
Are, are we required to workshop it?
No, but, uh, it, it.
Is, is there something so controversial about this? Because I, to me, this is like a great step forward and, you know.
Yeah. Well, well.
Your meetings is better in life, if you ask me, but that's just me.
So, I agree with you, um, the, the, um. Yeah, so the one thing we can do is, is suggest that we workshop it, I don't think there's anything on here that's that controversial, but I was also going to run these two that we've just, uh, been discussing in front of the, the, uh, town attorney, because I think they're, they're not substantive changes necessarily, so I'm going to let him make that determination. And if not, if not, we could do a public hearing at the next meeting, and if we, if we don't need to send it to council, and just.
Let, let's do that, let, let's, if you can make final drafts for next time, have a conversation with, uh, uh, Phil Sossier, and then we'll make a decision next time what to do with them. But I agree with, no point in over, overbaking them. Is there consensus in the board to move forward with these things? I don't think we need to vote, but if everybody's nodding yes, going.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Um, is the other applicant here, because this is a good breaking, I'm going to shop stare, shop, stop sharing now.
And then we could come back to the, uh, uh, waiver business.
Yes, it is, I don't know if the applicants here, you want to hit that waiver.
Sorry. Yep, I am here.
Do you want to move on to that next?
Let's do that, and they'll come back, the ordinance, not to waste Eric's time, we've already wasted enough of our time.
I think I wasted my own time.
Well, no, it's Eric, uh, we apologize, uh, uh, the administrator of, uh, the office on this, it was out tonight. We didn't close the loop on office versus no office, and the, under normal conditions, the, the town office would have been open, and you would have been broadcast from that location, so.
Yeah. So you. I, I did go in, and there were a bunch of ladies, and they're having a meeting, and they were very startled to see me.
Okay, well.
I don't know what they were meeting for, but.
Oh, well. We apologize for your round trip, uh, to, to South Park, but there you are, so.
Well, it's a scenic ride up Route thirty, two thirty-six, you know?
Right, um, so I, this, you, uh, I just laid the groundwork for the board and the public, uh, you sent us a letter with some attachments, uh, last week. Uh, you requested a consultation, you haven't made application yet, uh, so this is all, uh, talk. Uh, and, um, if you make application, there'll be a bunch of stuff you have to do, so, uh, um, if you have questions of us, you want to talk in general about a, a project, then have at, please.
Well, uh, could you guys let me share my screen?
Uh.
Or can I just go ahead?
Go ahead. Try, see the work.
All right.
Work.
All right, good, uh, well, for the record, I'm Eric Sorry from Alls Engineering, I'm here on behalf of the potential future applicant Dozal. Uh, I don't think any of those gentlemen are here on Zoom tonight, um, they're probably driving around South Park. Um, but, uh, we've got a parcel on Witch Trot Road, um, this is, uh, it's a seventy-three acre parcel. Uh, wooded, it does have a few little structures on there and a couple of woods roads, uh, and it was proposed for subdivision many, many years ago. Uh, but something happened back then, and it did fall through, um, so the project has come back to life, and what we're envisioning are two different versions of an eighteen lot subdivision. Either the one you see in front of you on the screen, which is a conventional subdivision, uh, which has got road access to two points on Witch Trot to cul-de-sac off it, and obviously the loop that goes all the way around with, uh, the lots accessed off the road. And the second one I'm doing this right, there we go, is a cluster or conservation subdivision, still eighteen lots, but it reduces the road length by about fifty percent and puts about eighty percent of the lot into conservation as open space. So obviously, there'd be a lot less environmental impact on that. Um, so I'm here just to discuss this very broadly with you guys, to take your temperature on it, see if you guys have any comments, condemnations, um, questions, uh, before we go into hard design. Um, one of the issues with the, uh, the conservation subdivision up here on the screen is the six hundred foot long cul-de-sac limit that you guys have in town. The six hundred foot limit is right here. So in order to access the back, we would need relief on that. Uh, right now, we've got about twenty-seven hundred feet of road in this configuration. Uh, if we went with the other one, the conventional, obviously, we don't need relief on the, the cul-de-sac, because we are accessing Witch Trot in both locations, I'm of a mind that even though you know, it's great to have big lots and land, I, I think that this layout really preserves a lot more land and is less invasive on, on every aspect of, of the natural environment here. Uh, has a little bit less in terms of wetland impacts, um, obviously puts land aside in conservation. So that, that's the angle that, that we're approaching here, um. That's pretty much all I have at this point, I, I think this is more just a, a, a forum for you guys to comment and ask any questions, and for me to get a little direction from you guys. Uh, do you have a preference, uh, between the plans, and if so, and if we do go with the cluster, could there be some relief to the six hundred foot cul-de-sac? So I think maybe we'll start with that. What do you guys think?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Um. Well, I, I think that some advice would be to be in touch with D E P right away.
Absolutely.
And not wait till the end.
Yep.
Um, I also think, um, sorry, I, I'm losing my words, but I mean, being, being able to prove that, um, you know, you won't be damaging, you know, certain wildlife or natural, you know, water places, I mean, that's, that's going to be huge, and I, I just, um, sorry, I'm just totally blanking, but I think that it, it would definitely be worth your, the time and effort to do the D E P first because we have learned a lesson that it will take a very, 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 very long time.
Yes, it does.
Right, if, if, uh, if, if we don't have a for sure thing that, that will happen, and we will, and we will require, I'm guessing, I mean, I would obviously ask Bill about this, but I, I would guess that we are going to require a full, um, traditional plan before we'll consider, even consider, uh, look at me, I can't finish, the cluster.
I think, when, uh, Betsy, if you're, if I'm hearing you right, you talk about D E P, but there's also the I F and W review, which is the specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be part of it, uh, we're over fifteen lots, we'd have to go for site location anyway, so all of those bases will be covered.
I guess what we're saying, Eric, is that we, we've had more than one project in the last couple of years get killed by that late in the game.
So they went through you guys, they got approval waiting for their day permits.
But they, 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 they took months and months and meetings and at our time, and, uh, and then when they were headed towards the end, maybe they got creamed by I F and W.
Okay, that is good advice.
Yeah, uh, and, 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 uh, the, the wiped out lots all over the place.
Okay, that's good, so, yeah, this lot.
If you, if you, uh, if you get I F and W consultation early, maybe before you even bring a sketch plan to us, uh, that might be, because, you know, you can have ideas here that just don't fly.
Yep.
So.
Okay, that makes sense.
We're required to, or, we're required to make sure that you can prove a traditional subdivision plan will work there before we can even consider a cluster.
Yep, well, that, that would be this plan here, which would be the yield plan, so it's the same number of lots.
Yeah, yeah, but, but the I F and W things, uh, would have to apply to this as well, so we have to, those are plausible lots.
I, I'd run it through both ways, I think, because I, I can run the, the data search on I F W with, with both plans, um. This lot does have some vernal pools, I don't know if you guys can see that on the screen, so there's definitely some significant habitat out there.
How, how are they designated on the, on the, on the screen, are they the dark shaded ones?
Uh, well, the wetlands are in green, and the dark shaded ones are, uh, the, the vernal pools, the, the crosshatch ones are like this one up in here. That's a significant pool, so that has a two hundred and fifty foot buffer to it, which we can encroach upon up to twenty-five percent. And then the, the regular old vernal pools, not significant vernal pools, are the ones with just the diagonal hatching.
And how, how, how have they been characterized today?
Uh, I believe Joe Noel did the flagging and the, uh, the, what, the assessment on those. Um, and I believe that the state is aware of the, of all the pools here, especially the significant ones, so those will show up on I F W on the mapper.
Yeah, and has there been, the thing, the thing that, uh, has been troublesome for these other projects is, is species, endangered species.
Yeah, we, we haven't gotten that far yet, so I F and W will definitely trigger that, I mean, I, I know we're going to get a hit on long-eared bat, northern long-eared bat, we hit that every single project in the state, um, but I don't know about anything else.
Well, there's, there's, uh, the turtles and, uh, a couple of other things, uh, have been showing up, and they, we, we didn't, we didn't want to spend all the time and the applicant did not want to get the big surprise that they had towards the end after much, much effort and a lot of money. So, uh, I.
That's, that's a good idea, yeah, that's a, that's a good idea, so I think I'll start with I F and W and probably have a pre-consultation with D P after I get I F and W data, just to see if this is even worth pursuing.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, I think ideally, if you could do that even before we were dealing with sketch, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, that's easy enough.
Well, the other thing is that, the, go to the cluster idea there, um, uh, the, how, how long would that road be to the, the far cul-de-sac?
It, it's twenty-seven hundred feet total, this is about five hundred, so you're looking at twenty-two hundred to the throat here.
Okay, twenty-two is a lot, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
That, that's a, that's a, that's a big.
It is, the, the problem is the shape of the lot, where you've got this long, narrow bit here to get back into the big piece. Which is why a loop road makes sense, but you have greater environmental impact doing that.
Oh, yeah, you got a lot more road, for sure.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have a, a, a locus, location, I, I know where this is, but I'm not sure everybody else does.
Uh, not on the plan, no, I don't.
Could you pull up Google Earth and we could find it?
Uh, let's, let's try that, let's see here, uh, can you guys see that?
No.
Is there just, is there a Witch Trot Road number or address? I know there's a tax.
There's no address, because there's no house.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Is it between two other addresses?
Well, between sixty-one and sixty-five, uh, sixty, something like that, it's right in, right around sixty-five.
Just go to, go to, get any of those things that.
Yeah, I think we're right in here, or maybe, I think it's this piece, actually.
Uh, I still got your, yeah, got the other screen up, Eric.
Oh. Let's stop sharing, let's try it again.
Yeah.
You guys got that?
There we go.
Okay. So town, town's over here, we got Cox Pond here, this is Witch Trot Road through here.
So that, go to that, at the intersection off two thirty-six, that's a.
Yeah, right here.
No, yeah, and that's where they're, uh, yeah, where they're talking about, um, that's the ninety-one intersection, okay, yeah, then, then you hang, you hang a left, go north on Witch Trot Road, okay, got it.
So Witch Trot going up here, and then it's off on the left, I, I think, I think it's this piece in here. Yeah, it is, because you, it's been timbered, you can see, and the, the lot shape has got this angle in it. So, yeah, you can see what's on the site now, it's just a couple of trailers, somebody's got a boat, um, just a couple of woods roads, but there is no, there is no house.
It, so it's to the north of Witch Trot Road on the left side going out, okay, that's at, after the top of the hill, right?
I think so, yeah, you're going downhill in this area, yep.
Okay, that's helpful.
Do it about the prob, the power lines?
I think there's a piece in the way, actually, but yeah, it's right up next to them. I don't think it actually touches them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank, that, that, that's helpful to me.
Eric, could I ask, or i- is the board about asking some questions, or?
Go, go ahead, David.
Okay, I was, some of the, uh, things that, uh, Eric, when I'm going over my review for the, for the town is, um, I'll need, I'll want to know complete street lengths, you know, and if you could break that down and impervious for both designs.
Okay.
Really what I'm going to be wanting is on, uh, basically on the traditional design, the entire loop road, I want to know the entire length of the loop and the connector piece connecting the loop to the main roadway. Uh, on the, on the cluster development, just the, the full lengths to the end of the right of way. Uh, the proposed right of way. Um, the other thing that always helps is a narrative, giving me a breakdown or giving the board a breakdown of number of lots, acres of lots, um, the intent for the project, just overall kinds of things, how are they going to be served? I assume you're looking at doing wells and septic out here?
Yeah.
Okay, wells and septic, um, I assume there's no hydrants anywhere out in the woods, so.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, um, and maybe a, a little bit more information if you blow up your, um, site location plan to a really big size, that'd be help, uh, helpful. Um, we may look at some traffic counts in the area, uh, and I, uh, will be looking for site distance is always a big one. I, I think you've got a fair amount in that location. Um, you had talked about a prior case that went forward, maybe just a quick summary of what that happened, they proposed a case, they withdrew it, it got denied, whatever, I don't know what the issues may have been.
I've always seen the plan on that, I don't know the history, all I know is it obviously never got built, so I don't know why, why it dissolved.
That's the least, that's the least important, but.
It never went to planning board.
Okay, I wasn't, you know, if there was suddenly, uh, some contaminated.
They dragged their feet and didn't do anything, and then finally the, the market tanked and. They dragged their feet and didn't do anything, and then finally the the market tanked and they just withdrew and that was it.
Okay.
Supposed to encompass this lot and another lot to the north.
Yeah, the road went all the way through.
Correct.
Yeah.
About way to double J lane.
About when was that proposal made?
Oof, geez, that was probably two thousand eight, probably, right in that area.
If you say it never got to the planning board, Joe?
It, they brought conceptual plans in and stuff like that, and then it just died.
Since two thousand eight and I never saw it, so.
Yeah, it so it was before that then.
Yeah, I just.
It's been a while.
I just want to make sure if there if there was any major thing for the reason that it never went forward, you know, there was suddenly some. You know, archaeological site there or something, I don't know, I just want. No, I. Obviously, I meant, why did it not move forward? That was all.
Yeah, I think the logistics, the logistics with the double J lane area is where it got bottlenecked.
Okay.
Because that was a private road and they wanted the world.
Okay. Um, the other thing is um a project, probably a project name, a subdivision name. Uh, early on, and maybe you could talk to um to Joe about a street names, we're not there yet, but. Um, it's nice for us to be able to track it by a street name or something like that, you could talk to Joe or or however that is. But sometimes we get a proposed name when it comes in and. I we've had cases change name literally three times and tried to find all the documents associated with the review, it's been challenging. Once or twice, so that's all.
Should be the the project name would be better because road.
Yeah, I meant, yeah, project name.
The the map and lot number should be on everything, anyway. Uh, Jeff, did you have any questions of Eric at this time?
Um. No, no, I just um. Yeah, no, I don't have anything at this point, especially now knowing it's the other side of the road from Cox Pond and. Uh, waterways seem to, there doesn't seem to be any real tributaries or whatnot from what I can tell, so. That was what I was looking at, that would that would be concerned with.
Hershey, I think we hit on uh uh Betsy Hood on on your issue with I F and W early on. Which we all agree on, we that uh, I mean, we we spent. Better part of a year on a project that should have failed at the outset with I F and W.
Yep. It was, it was a year, I think we missed it by two weeks. It started in September, we just sort of wrapped it up when we wrapped it up, so. September twenty twenty.
Uh, I F and W, if they'd known that what they needed to know at the beginning with I F and W, we could have saved a lot of heartache.
I think um the only one of I was just out there uh last week. Um, that's a a little windy road and and whatnot, I know we've talked about it before, not sure how much you. Would take in account, Eric, just but one of the things I tend to think of is the amount of the traffic and um. And um. Safety with cars entering which try, I I don't know how much you can handle with that, but it's just one of those things that pop in my mind, I want to bring up, that's all.
Yeah, we we'd have to check the site distance to make sure it works at at any driveway location.
Is there any source of A D T on that road, you know?
No idea. I haven't gotten that far. This this is, I'm at the stage where I just drew a concept and this is where we're at.
You could, you could tell we're all bitten on the last issue that we had, so trying to trying to send everyone time and money.
Well, we we don't want to waste your your time or your money or mine, so.
So uh, we need to, we suggest you think about these comments and uh uh if you come back with a a application for a. Uh, a subdivision and a alternative cluster, it it should include the things that we're talking about, even at this.
Okay.
Oh, and also, if you could, uh, sorry, any uh tree lines that exist currently. And where they exist and where they're going to, where you're proposing to eliminate. Uh, vegetation areas, uh, you know, tree coverage and stuff like that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, pretty much the whole site, except for a little area in here is wooded, so I I think what we do is just draw a limit of disturbance. I mean, on the house slots itself, it'd probably be a guesstimate.
Okay.
But I can definitely nail the road down in the storm waters and and let you know what would come out for that.
Okay, okay.
And again, these are single family homes, correct?
Yes, they are.
Uh, and they're on onsite water and sewer, obviously, there's nothing, no water or sewer up there.
Yep. Yeah, that's that's another thing, we're gonna need to do test bits uh to to prove out uh septic systems.
So these are all, what what what's the what's the typical small lot size there, is that the?
Well, the minimum in a cluster is twenty thousand, but I think the smallest one is a hair under twenty four, yeah, lot four is twenty three eight sixty six.
Yeah, got it.
And then the biggest one, I think we got a forty one thousand right over here. So they're not micro lots, but they're not estate lots either, which is kind of the idea.
Okay. Sorry for your road trip up to South Burke and back, but uh we got, we caught up with it.
Sorry for the confusion. All right, guys, I I got all dressed up for nothing.
Hey, uh, and Eric, if if you want to contact me directly, there's a case that came before the board. In the last six months or so that did a really nice job of putting the gay uh together a subdivision with all of the endangered. Beaches and wetlands and you name it, and it it made the review go ten times faster, easy.
Okay.
So if you want to, uh, anybody remember the name of that one, let me.
Off a mountain.
Parent.
Yeah, what if you follow it, that was.
Mountain Road East and West or something like that.
Was it?
Yeah.
Uh, I've I've got it, but if you um, my contact information should be on the town's website. And if not, you can uh Amy or Joe know how to get ahold of me.
Okay, all right.
Oh, actually, I could email you, I'll email you instead.
Even better.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much, nice to meet you.
Right, nice to meet you guys too, appreciate it.
Sure enough, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Pretty, I'm pretty sure uh, I'm pretty sure looking at subdivision plans, like, like I was re-traumatized. And I just couldn't get the words out.
Did I make a joke now? We get traumatized, you look at the 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 zoom screen, uh, I think Joe's playing Halloween, kind of leering behind a black curtain there today. Anyway, all right, let's get back to uh uh the ordinance review, and uh so we got those two notification things understood and we're doing that. And then we also noticed that we had a uh perennial problem with the assignment to the zoning board of appeals. For variances of road standards, not waivers by the the planning board and which it used to be years ago. And so uh David's gone through the ordinance and has a memo to go through on that.
Yep, and I'm going to again try and see if I could share my screen. And. Okay, can you see it says street specifications, okay, um, okay, so. As Bill gave it overview, we're looking to clean up some of this language, um. There was a couple of items in here when I went through that are really, uh, they spelled cul-de-sacs with an extra S, so. This is a the calls to sack, so I I made all those changes and I'm tracking them as a, you know, change it all at the same time. Housekeeping kind of things, um, the main item here is under the design standards item N. If you remember, the language it was in there gave the authority to waive streets. Design standards to the zoning board of appeals. Um, the other, they what the issues are, one, they called it uh a zoning variance. Two, they gave it to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, who doesn't review any other design aspect of either site plan or subdivision review for that matter. And um. They're using wrong terminology and the like, so there was a number of things, so I have two documents that we can look at today. The first one is the actual text amendment that I put in here, I added some language, and this is, this is really this first sentence that I'm pointing at here that I added. Um. There was the talk about undue hardship, undue hardship is a standard, uh, undue hardship is a standard that. Is from granting variances, and they're not looking for a hardship standards. Um, and I can talk about that, and I talk about that in my memo that I've already drafted for the town council. Once you guys have done that, so we'll hit that next, but I took out the hardship standards, but. Um, the issue with the undue hardship is there was no other specifications in the ordinance about. Why the board would even want to consider, um, first of all, uh, it's the ordinance is written, so. The authority would be transferred from the zoning board of appeals and put it back where it was originally and. Uh, with the authority being the planning board, I mean, who better to, I we've talked about the reasons why, so we can get into that later, but. Um. And then I also added some language in here, so. Uh, let's start here, with the required standard is clearly illogical or impractical. Um, I added, and upon showing that the proposed roadway design will result in a ser- superior overall project design. And I took up all those hardship standards, and then the planning board may grant a waiver from the standards. And I that I added, appeals to the planning board waiver determination shall be taken to Superior Court. Again, that's where it belongs, the zoning board should not be there to for a hundred and fifty bucks challenge the planning board's authority on every single thing. So that is.
Without without that, the the appeal is to the zoning board?
Yep. Yeah, we don't even need to have that in there, uh, I just wanted to spell it out because. It seems like the zoning board is, if we don't agree with the planning board, we automatically do that. The the if of the the planning board denies an application or someone has a problem because you say, yeah, I'm going to approve. The planning board says, we're gonna approve this, but we're not gonna grant, for example, the roadway length waiver, that could kill a project. If and when a project, uh, if an applicant, whether it be in a butter or the um. The applicant uh is denied, they ought to take that challenge to the uh to the uh. It's right in front of me, I'm trying to read it, Superior Court.
Well, uh, well, let's 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 put that in yellow for now, let's think about that.
And that may be something that it it's another question that I've got to ask the town, uh, the town attorney.
Also, uh, uh, it's a, it's a, you know, we got, we got the the entire zoning ordinance, one forty. Allows for decisions of the planning board to be appealed to the Z B A based on facts and so forth. Or procedures, so to take this out of that would be controversial, and I haven't thought it out myself.
Yeah.
Uh, we uh we had that one case on the on the Bennett Lot Business where they they appealed it, but like I said. From my experience in thirteen years, that's the first time I ever saw that. But I haven't, they do that except for that one time. Right, it's talk to Phil and also we'll want to think about the policy of that. I think the the language you have about the circumstances is is excellent.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, okay, go ahead, George.
Well, I just, I um, currently our standards are, it's a six hundred foot roadway is allowed, is that right?
Yep.
But we we, it seems have always waived it in all the projects I've been on so far. Because it doesn't really allow you to develop to the full extent zone the rest of the ordinance allows, is that is that fair to say?
Uh, and and certain cases, yes.
So, wh- what I don't really understand is why is it six hundred feet? Was that a fire department requirement? Or was there some, did we want to basically ensure that people didn't do huge developments? And so we limited the amount of roadway only to waive it all the time, I mean, I don't really understand what the six hundred feet was supposed to accomplish to begin with.
I I think it was a ju- the just a dead end design kind of thing.
Now, now that. Hershey's question's right on. It uh.
Right, and and if we're just gonna constantly waive it, then maybe we should rethink six hundred feet.
Right.
Do you know what I mean?
My understanding was it it started out as a a fire department thing, but fire departments are usually good with twelve hundred feet or fifteen hundred feet even.
Correct, they, I think it was back in the day, they they said six hundred feet and stuff like that, and then they they never wanted to change it. The thing is, we keep, we keep plenty of hose on the trucks, we keep plenty of water on the trucks. As long as the road is built to a standard, there should be no issue how long it is, because in as long as you have turnarounds. It should be fine, because it's built to a standard.
So so Joe, are you saying the six hundred feet came from the fire department originally?
Negative, no, it didn't. That was back, maybe back in the forties, fifties and sixties, and then when they did zoning, maybe, maybe that was something they thought about.
Actually.
Today, not even close.
Hershey, I could tell you that the town council ten years ago.
Yeah.
Um, uh, this was kept as a growth control. Playing this level.
Okay, so if 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 that was the intent, to me, it means every time we have. A a whether it's a subject like the 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 plans we just looked at, right? If we if we decided not to waive the six hundred foot requirement, their project is impractical. And it it's sort of in conflict with what we allow for zoning in general, in terms of the number of lots they're allowed to have. In terms of the size of their whole.
Yeah, and it it property, it goes in direct conflict with the cluster concept. Because cluster concepts almost always end up with a shorter dead end road and much less total road to to leave uh land undeveloped.
Okay, well, so. That would seem like that would be that, because that's not actually associated with just. This is just the 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 item where we that we were talking about today, was just talking about the the waiver authority and things like that. In the in the street standards, it it sounds like perhaps the board wants to also look at that language again.
We and, well, what happened, I I I. I I'm acting as the as the history guy here.
Please.
We we. Through all the road standards and did a wholesale uh modification into what they are now. I don't know, eight, ten years ago, and it all made sense, and the town council at that time. Had a growth control mindset, some of them did, and so they took the waivers away from the planning board. And gave them to the zoning board, which was illogical.
Just to make it more difficult.
Exactly. So so we we've changed the road standards, we fixed the road standards, and they took the waiver away from us.
Okay, but even if we got the waiver back, it would still be six hundred feet, which is. It it seems impractical.
Right.
And not only that, it it would, it in my eyes, it would constitute basically a taking, because you wouldn't. No one could develop the lots they're allowed to have in the zoning ordinance with a six hundred foot road.
Well, or they have to the loop roads, so.
Right, like the like the one we talked about, but the well, the, so. If we're talking about roadway designs. Um, that, I think we should, we should bring that up in a, uh, I mean, I can change that. But I this was just for the uh, this is just for the. The waiver, the waiver.
I I'm fine with with bringing the waiver back to where it belongs, but then I think we should continue having this discussion about the road.
It's a separate discussion.
Yeah, I do, I do too, so should we put that as maybe a discussion item, the the roadway length issue for one of our next meetings?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
And uh, I the the whole moving something to a variance. From a zoning board of appeals, who's the 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 enabling legislation for the zoning board has nothing to do with waivers. It's variances of zoning, it was just weird, and it didn't work at all.
So, so that being said, is there language in the actual. Uh, uh, the the language that I pro- provided, is there any changes that the board wants to have, we maybe, I'm gonna talk to Phil about the policy decision.
Yep.
And 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 show him this kind of thing, but the actual verbiage doesn't change a whole lot. Trying to, trying to explain the verbiage is is the 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 trick here, I think.
I I think, for my eyes, it looks perfect.
Okay, okay, so I will, could we, uh, this, can I get a consensus from the board?
Go for it.
All right, so let's, let's save that. Now, the last uh in association with this, the last item that we had. Was, give me one second to hear here. I also included. I also included, um. The document should pop up. There we go. Can you see this memorandum?
Yep.
This is probably where you would, this is only talking about the waiver, moving the, the waiver sta. I mean, the variant standards to a waiver standards and moving the authority from the zoning board to the planning board. That's all this memo is covering, and I thought that you guys would want, so the memo that I wrote, I wrote it to you, I sent it to you. My, the way I wrote this was that the next time you would see it would not be for me, it would be from the planning board to the town council. Does this have?
Yes, that, that's fine. That was fine.
Was there, was there any changes that you guys wanted in, in, in that document?
I, I, I thought this was well-written. I liked it. It didn't have, I, I often have edits. I didn't have any on this one.
All right, all right, that is all I had to. I'm gonna stop sharing before I get some more work here.
Right. Thank you, David. Good work. Move all, move all this ahead, so, okay. All right, so, uh, uh, we got no other business, uh, member comments. Anybody have, ever comment? I always do, but I'll wait. So, um. Uh, I've been contacted by, uh, a potential applicant to the planning board. Um, who I think is, uh, got, um, uh, a lot to offer, and, um. The, he has a standing conflict on many first and third Wednesdays. And his question was, if, would the board and would our bylaws allow, if he was. Uh, appointed as a planning board, allowed to go to the second and fourth Tuesday, Wednesdays? We just flop it over for the second, fourth, rest in the first and third. And, um, um, I said, I, I'd run it by the board, and if, I think if we choose to do that, uh, we can do it by bylaws and, and it's, there's no big deal. Would anybody have a, uh, uh, other, other conflicts in their lives if it was shifted to the second? This, this is only in the event that he applies, he gets appointed, and then requests that we move the thing over.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I, I, I hate to be wishy-wash, but I need to check my schedule a little more carefully, because I have some standing meetings on Wednesdays, but maybe I can move those, so.
Okay, uh, could you, uh, just communicate with me on that, Hershey?
Yeah.
And I'll take it from there.
I, I have meetings for other municipalities sometimes, uh, on a Tuesday night. But for right now, I'm wrapping up the work in those towns, and so if I.
Like on Tuesdays, we're just, we're going from the first.
I mean, yeah, excuse me, the, the, the Wednesdays is set at two, but that should be fine by me. As long as we're doing remote meetings, that's fine.
Okay.
You guys are the important ones, so I'll work around you.
Right, I, I, I have no idea what this gentleman's gonna, uh, agree to do, but, uh, it's something I told him, I, I would, uh, run it by the board, so. Okay. And I, I'll put out the call for planning board nominees, anyway. We still need, if he comes on, we need two or three more, so. And I see, I see people showing up by, uh, virtual and having interest in the, in the process, and that's great. Uh, so I, I'll put it again, be, um, if you're interested in participating even as an alternate, that'd be great too. All right, I don't think we have man this night, unfortunately, so I'll look for a, be a motion to adjourn from somebody else, someone, someone.
I, I motion we adjourn, so I can go back to the ballgame.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's it. All right, we're good. See you guys.
Bye.
Thanks, guys. Bye.